And then we'll move out to our friends on Zoom audience.
Sure, I'm Joey, I live in two seven three South Street.
Last name?
Joe.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate hearing the perspectives of these people that are going to be directly impacted as well as the presentation. And I also just wanted to quickly add that personally, you know, as a millennial and potential future home buyer, I am in favor of seeing more small efficiency homes, tight homes come on the market, particularly ones that are within walking and biking distance to downtown. So we don't have to continue to, you know, clog the neighborhoods with car traffic. And it looks like this project does contain an aspect of that. So I just wanted to add that voice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else at city council chambers? Okay, then we'll move out to our participants on Zoom. And if you would raise your hand, we'll call on you in that order. So our first one would be, I believe it's Jacqueline's iPhone. I think you're unmuted now.
Thank you. Jacqueline McCleaner, Northampton. Speaking of last minute submittals, eight files were added to the permit file for the proposed project at Eightview Avenue today online. Our residents have not had time to review or respond to these submittals. So I just want to share that. I don't think the public, the planning board, or the applicant and his landscape architecture consultant fully understand seriousness of the repercussions of this proposed project and the destruction of the significant Norway spruce forest and wetlands at Eightview Avenue. If they read either of the two petition letters that oppose this project, which share a combined sixty-seven unique signatures, maybe they would have some sense of the catastrophes that await if this proposed project was passed by the board. This proposed project allows, it proposes to allow three thousand six hundred ninety-one square feet of unmitigated untreated stormwater to sheet flow into North Street or into the wetlands. North Street already floods. So that is unacceptable. It originally proposed cut down twenty-nine of thirty-five significant Norway spruce trees. The revised plan only saves two more trees, not four, but that would not be very much anyway. The plan is to replace less than twenty-five percent of the existing significant trees with two to three inch saplings. From what Kent shared earlier, it takes these trees decades to to grow to the point where the the trees that are there now and to provide the benefits that they already are providing. So that is unacceptable, especially in a ward that has, you know, twenty-four percent mature tree canopy. Also unacceptable is Carolyn's statement in her June thirteenth staff memo that advises the board to approve this project based on the cookbook that is the special criteria in the U R B table. The special permit process is not formulaic, and the board has the discretionary power to reject this proposed plan, even if all the special permit criteria are met. The five and a half for Norway spruce forests and wetlands provide critical flood control and heat mitigation for the neighborhood and for the city. Take away these significant trees and wetlands, and you take away the last line of defense this neighborhood has against extreme flooding and extreme heat. Our basements will flood more, our streets will be hotter and flood more, and the new homes built on slab foundations will certainly flood. We already have twenty-four percent mature tree canopy in Ward Tree B. Not enough. That's problematic in itself for dealing with all the heat islands that Paige mentioned that we have around us like downtown Northampton, King Street, the industrial park, and Interstate ninety-one. Carolyn's carbon calculator that she mentioned at the June thirteenth hearing does cannot factor in from what I can tell how the significant Norway spruce forest at Eightview Avenue protects North Street area neighbors from extreme flooding and extreme heat, mitigates climate change and greenhouse gases in the atmosphere, protects Northampton's air and waterways from pollution, offers portions, offsets portions of the nearby heat islands generated by downtown Northampton, King Street, the industrial park, Interstate ninety-one, and preserves green space in the North Street area neighborhood and protects the neighborhood from turning into a concrete jungle with significantly increased impervious surface area. The city claims they are protecting natural resources in U R A districts while infilling U R B and U R C districts via smart growth polls. This boils down to environmental and social injustice as the city protects some residents from the effects of local climate crises while throwing other residents under the bus. I strongly urge you to protect the neighboring residents, purchase this land, and permanently preserve this significant urban forest and wetlands. Residents offer the city ten thousand dollars toward the permanent preservation of this land. Thank you.
Thank you. I I see that Meg Robbins has her hand raised. Meg, nope. Okay. Carolyn, do you see anybody else?
Sorry, George, you weren't letting me unmute. Now I am. Thank you. Yeah, George.
Okay, go right ahead. This is Robbins.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, George. I appreciate that. I am Meg Robbins, also of Aldrich Street, and I would like to speak to your responsibility as a planning board and thinking about what we heard earlier about after effect. Where I live, which is a historical lowline district, we have had changes in our area, and since you're a neighbor, you're aware of this. Most recently, we had some Norway pines taken down from Prospect Street. A little bit more in the history, we had a neighbor who had a large yard, which acted as a rain garden, who was allowed to build infill on appeal. Since then, our neighbors down the street have had incredible flooding from Prospect Street into their yard, which has resulted in ice in an elderly neighbor's driveway, which he's just spent an extraordinary amount of money trying to stone wall up. But in hours, without that rain garden, which would be what would happen in Eightview Avenue, the water is no longer has a place to come down Aldrich Street. There's no rain garden there. It comes off the roof of the infill that was added to that well-meaning owner's house, who really was unaware of it, but got permission. There is no semi-permeability in the area. It flows down the road and it comes into a lake in front of our house. And most recently this summer, we have had such substantial flooding that has flowed through our entire property, taken out trees, taken out the roots, flown into, fortunately, our neighbors on State Street who do still have a rain garden in geysers behind them. And then, as we all know, ended up in a flood on State Street, which is extended all the way from the New Way House on the corner of Summer Street, which has had serious flooding, because that is not a good place to be able to have any kind of water accumulate all the way up to pass the mayor's house to to Indy House. That's what's going to happen at Eightview. We we can't look back on it later and say, gosh, that was a bad idea. We have these historical wetlands because the people who lived here before us knew they were not places to build houses. They knew they needed to keep them. They knew they needed the water to absorb them. They didn't anticipate climate change, but we can. We can actually say these are, these are priorities for preserving the forests that we have, the rain gardens that we have. Roofs do not make semi-permeable absorption for the large flooding that we're going to have. And I'm really concerned about our thinking about where we're going to put people to live, where they're going to be dealing with that flooding as well. And I'm going to add incidentally as well, that these buildings strike me not as homes, they strike me as potential Airbnbs, which we've had an increasing number of in Northampton. And I'm wondering who we're building housing for. So I'm going to appeal to you as as Jackie McCleaner just did, which is this is a great opportunity to purchase this plot of land, preserve it forever, keep it as this beautiful, cool, non-heat island that will help us through picture Main Street if we if we go down that route in preserving at least some absence of heat loss during that project and later on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the Zoom room who would like to comment at this time? All right. All right, well, I, before we go back to public comment, I'd like to just turn to the board, see if you have any questions for the applicant or his reps, his or her reps. Doing okay? All right, okay. Any last comments here in council chambers?
Yes, let's think about the housing situation. And I appreciate so much what Miss Robbins said. Airbnb.
Paige Bridgens.
Paige Bridgens.
Thank you.
Twelve Northern Avenue. I would like to suggest this might be a little bit of a radical idea, but as we consider the idea of the city purchasing this land, that we also consider ponying up some money to buy the large house that's for sale on North Street, whereupon we pass it off to Dr. Bossy, where she creates another miracle like she did at Five Franklin Street, the SRO that serves previously unhoused people. This big house on North Street could do that same work. And she has the will and the ability to make this happen. We need to get that house to her, and we need to address the Airbnb issue. Otherwise, we got to stop talking about housing as if it is something to justify building. We have housing all along North Street, as I said last time.
Thank you. Just as a clarification, the city of Northampton does have an ordinance that directly addresses Airbnbs. And if you'd like more information on that, I'm sure you can get it from the planning office or the building inspector. Any other comments here before we turn back to the board?
Please, because I'll shut up. I I, okay, I want to say that we have some topics. We appreciate the comments of everybody for housing and that this needs a purpose in our town. And we do have a decent development.
Thank you. I'm sorry. That's actually not for this room, but it's for Zoom.
Oh, okay. That was approved on day out, nine small units that serve a similar purpose. So we have some of that. I think my my call, my wish, my hope is that we just slow things down. And you all have tremendous power in this. Based on the current way that zoning is designed, if I even understand it correctly, we have a lack of checks and balances from this point forward, where the people who are living in the neighborhoods have a way to stand up if they learn about it later, as I described, and if concerns arise. Given all of the information that was presented today about the future, and I think what I'm taking away is we are, we at Northampton are doing a really good job about thinking about now and about what we need to do to change now in ways that are really meaningful and important. And my request and need, I guess, is to trust that we are thinking about the future in equal conscientiousness. I don't feel confident in that at this point, based on what I'm, the way things are happening in my neighborhood. Once this is voted upon today, if I'm understanding correctly, it's happening. Given, and and maybe it should definitely happen, but how it happens, can we have time to figure it out collectively? And I want to end by understanding that we are part of strong towns, Northampton. And in this, the beginning priority is we want, advocate for cities of all sizes to be safe, livable, and inviting. That is not the experience we're having in our local town right now. Something's getting in the way of this. And it also elevates local government as the highest level of collaboration. Collaboration is missing in some parts of the process at this point. We can't serve all needs at all of the time, but we can work together to make sure that we have balance in what we're considering at at. We need checks and balances all along the way to make good decisions for now and the future. Thank you so much for considering.
Thank you. All righty.
Guess I'll put my voice in the room.
Come on up.
So I'm Rosalind Torrey, Northern Avenue. And I appreciate everyone's comments, and I feel like I learned about new projects happening in my neighborhood tonight that I wasn't aware of. And there is a lot of impact as we increase our numbers. The neighborhood will have a lot of impact. And so I just want to underscore, I think if we could slow the process down, I'm not sure why it all has to happen at the same time. We we will be able to reflect on what the impacts are. I don't know if that is possible, but I would love to ask for for that process to be looked at differently so that people in the neighborhood could feel like they are a part of the discussion and could understand the process better of the environmental concerns versus the city's desire to increase more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call before we turn it over back to the board. Before we think about closing the public comment, we want to make sure that we have a chance to ask the applicant any questions we might have about the plans. Maybe we could.
There were some EPW comments, and one of them in particular, a lot of them were about utilities, but one in particular was about the trees along View Avenue. And they recommended a couple of approaches. One is to use flexipave instead of concrete in the, around the tree, under the tree canopy, and provide specificity about how that would work. The they also recommended that there may, that it would like, it would be appropriate to engage a certified arborist to determine the best way to create a sidewalk without damage to the trees. So I just wanted to put that out there. They certainly flagged that and put some detailed product information out about how that could be addressed.
And these are not city trees.
No.
They're not.
Private, right.
And did we look at moving the sidewalk to the other side of the street? And there wasn't the same availability of land there?
I'd have to ask.
Yeah, and there's some complications with the other other side of the street.
All right, so the the suggestion that a certified arborist look at that for for some different strategies about protecting those trees as a cost that's borne by the developer? Would you like to say something as you are the 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 tree man?
Yeah. Dave Fenton, one sixty-four, one sixty-six North Street. Again, my question, is there even a need for a sidewalk? It's it's a private road. It will remain a private road, I believe, right? You'll still own it. It's a private road. We maintain privately. Is there a need for a sidewalk for that hundred and twenty foot stretch, whatever it is? I that's my question, I guess, to you folks. You know the rules and the guidelines and so forth. So do we need a sidewalk? I don't, I don't think we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, dude. Yeah, I'll I'll speak for myself and maybe most of the board. A development like this, we firmly believe that sidewalks are necessary for pedestrian safety. We want people to walk more. We don't know how many young children or people who don't have cars or elderly will be coming down there. Well, there won't be the same amount of traffic as on Northern, Northern Ave, or, I'm sorry, not Northern Ave, but North Street or Market, but we do want, any kind of time we have a development like this of this number of units, we want to make sure there's a sidewalk for safety. So it is a priority for the city.
I have a six-speed limit either.
Yep. Yep.
So just to add to that, the code does require a pedestrian connectivity to the street from so it's not just priority, but it's it's codified. And the infrastructure needs to be as specified and comparable to the subdivision regs. There may be, there's also a shared streets provision within the subdivision rule. So I don't know if that's something the board would want to consider. For the pedestrian connectivity, it's in the site plan section under eleven point six. Yeah. And three fifty, eleven point six. And so I don't know if the applicant can describe also the existing paved width. I didn't see it on the plan spelled out.
I, um, yeah, I'd have to scroll in to look specifically, but it's it's within the existing right of way that's there now, obviously. Zoom in. I I want to say the roadway width is probably twenty-two feet. Is that what that, twenty feet? And so it's a twenty feet. So it's a twenty-foot wide road. And a five-foot sidewalk.
And the current paved road width is twenty feet?
Is roughly twenty feet. It's roughly the same width now. Yes, it varies a little bit, but.
Is your curving added to that?
Hold your comment, please. Carolyn, I don't understand your suggestion of the shared street concept. I know that when it comes to bicycles and a zero, but what does that in the subdivision regs is shared?
So I was just gonna pull that up. But essentially that you, that the paved portion, now the probably the complication might be that I think the, this is also used for parking for the abutting residences. So I assume that's going to remain, but that it's a shared space so that the essentially, there's, it might be a striped lane, but you're walking in the same space as vehicles. But you'd want to have, you'd want to neck down the entry, both entries.
Like you would for a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Like, so that's under the board's purview to look at that.
I'll pull that up and just read the standard.
And in terms of the tree and the arborist, I would assume that the applicant's willing to look into that for us. Yep, great. Uh, there are questions from the board?
With the street that you're, you're going to be saving, one of the things that attracts on North Street is this whole baseball ground. How many of those are you going to still be able to see? I, in my mind, when you said, I, that, that's the tree that are going to be saved for by a minor, those, those beautiful color trees are going to be saved.
I mean, yeah, I mean, there's a handful. I'm trying to see. I mean, there's, there's some of these spruces that you can see in the very back. This is looking down. This is from North Street, looking down View Avenue. So there's some, you can see some of the spruces in the back behind this house. So those, those would go away. But we're not.
Like the, like it. What is your request?
One sixty-four.
One fifty.
Oh, maybe fifty.
What, like, so further down on North Street, one fifty, there's, one of the things that's very beautiful is these all trees put for me to come. And, you know, that's a value monitor. That's a, there's a value to the neighborhood having that sort of beauty remain. Is that what we're talking about? What are we, because that's in my, in my head, that's where we're.
I mean, it's this cluster here is is certainly, you know, recognizable, you know, cluster. You know, there's, there's a small one up here as well.
Recognizable clusters, those are the ones that are going to be saved.
There's, well, there's, there's a, there's some back here that will be saved. A lot of these are proposed for removal because that's, that's the upland portion of the site. Yeah. Yep.
Also, perhaps, I I think it's important to remind folks that there isn't a prohibition on cutting trees, and there isn't a standard saying that, you know, for an evaluation of just trees in terms of impact and stormwater impact. That's why we have the stormwater regulations, but nowhere in the city is there a prohibition against cutting trees. So anybody, and it happens regularly, people want more sun on their swimming pools, or they want to just clear their yard. And so they are not required to replant trees for those trees that they cut. And so in this scenario, any project that comes before the planning board applicants are required to provide a replacement based on the calculation that's been adopted by the city council for the size and number of trees removed, which is not the case for anyone else who just clearcuts their property.
Yeah, one of the public comments referenced the recent ever-sourced clearcutting behind the abandoned Hess gas station by Walgreens. So that was their private property. They came in, they removed them all. Whether they will replace any is highly doubtful. And we had, the city had no leg to stand on to ask them to do anything different. So there are situations like that where we're at a loss too.
I mean, Mastod is going and clearing a whole bunch of trees around the Coolidge Bridge, and they do that regularly up and down. You know, within Northampton's jurisdiction as well. And there's nothing that the city can do about that either.
And there's nothing they can do about it at single-family homes, right?
Correct.
On any circumstance.
Yeah. Or in multifamily properties that the property owner just wants to cut trees. Yeah.
Okay. To the podium one more time, Ms. Myers.
Okay. So you're once.
And then we have other agenda items for sure, but please.
I just, what you just said about, this is what, I wasn't going to talk about this, but what a person can do on the property they own, that's not, you know, planning board meeting, is different from a planning board making decisions and having discretion about trees. I I just feel this is a different issue. Okay, so I just was wondering, I, we heard that there were eight documents that came before to the the site today, to the planning board site. And I'm wondering if the board members had a chance to, just in terms of procedure, had a chance to review those and consider them and discuss them so that you're, you know, all, just, just curious, because it's like last minute, we haven't seen them, obviously. And I know the presenter tried to explain some things, but just very last minute, it makes it harder for a public hearing to, because we don't know about these things or.
I can't speak for the other board members, but I was able to review them, and a lot of the information in those was material that we had already seen before, but written by a different author or written in a different way, perhaps more extensive references and research, and maybe one of the other doc documents reference was from the Department of Public Works. Their very kind of specific technical responses to the plan as presented. So, yes, they were, we did, we were notified of those, we were notified of all of the letters that came in before then. And it is a difficult process. The board can't always just continue meetings because somebody presents new information at the last minute. It's it's very difficult for us to kind of help the developer move through a process, to help the community move through a process. So.
It's hard for the community to be able to.
Yes.
As you could understand, too.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Related to that, I just wanted to clarify. So there and Jacqueline McCleaner mentioned this, that she had submitted a petition. So the board and none of the land use regulations anywhere are based on how many people sign on to a concept or a concern. So the board has to review the permit and the application based on what's presented in front of them and match it up with the rules and regulations. So any kind of petition doesn't mean those issues carry more weight. It just is that that those number of people also have that same perspective. So I just wanted to highlight that piece.
Okay.
George, can I say something?
Please.
Um, there were some comments raised about process and. process and voice in the process. Can we slow down this process to think about the impacts and so forth? Firstly, I want to say that there are at least two residents of Ward three B who are on the board, so we are actually thinking about what's happening because it's our neighborhood too. The planning and zoning regulations that are in the city are not designed around a single project, nor can they be stopped in the course of a single project. So I hear very much the concerns that you all have, and regardless of what happens with this individual project, I would urge you, if you want to see changes and understand better infill and want to be have more voice in the process, that those conversations don't happen. We can't change policy here today because we don't like this particular project that's here. Zoning regulations are proposed by the the planning office. They come here for our review, and then they go to city council for final adoption. So if you want to be a part of sort of changing the planning and zoning landscape in Northampton, the best way to do that is to get involved in that process outside of an individual project. I get that doesn't help you with your concerns today, but absolutely, we want your voice. And there was recently a group of residents who came forward to make a petition proposed change to the zoning in the city, and it ultimately was adopted by city council. So there absolutely are mechanisms in place. But we can't trigger those midstream. So I just regardless of what happens today, want to just urge all of you to stay involved, make your voices heard. It's much harder to do that in the abstract, to think about how might this actually happen in my backyard, but that's actually the best time to to make changes. I'm off my soapbox now.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Before we look at closing the public hearing, any last questions for the applicant? Okay. All right, we recognize Jacqueline in the hybrid room, in the Zoom room.
Thank you very much. I do want to respond to what I believe it was Jana who was just speaking, what what whoever that person is, it's hard to see out in Zoom world, but I think that's who it is. The board can say no to this project. You have the discretionary power to say no to this project based on the special permit process. If you're not aware of that, I would really like you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Do you want to entertain a motion to close public hearing? Okay, I'll move that we close public hearing.
I second.
Motion's been made. My Melissa seconded by Sam Taylor to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Here in none, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Last comments, questions, board, maybe we could review any conditions that would be attached to a motion to approve or deny the permit. Which are?
Are.
I think a lot of them have been resolved by the applicant, the DPW, but I know that prior to a CO traffic mitigation, amount of eleven thousand dollars to be made to address the zoning requirement for incremental increase in trips generated by the new use. Proof that tree replacement in accordance with the ordinance has been completed. And certification that the lighting install complies with the zoning and plans. Those are all prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
And I have a a couple more based on both the conversation here and Department of Public Works that sort of the standard condition of having pre-construction plans submitted fifteen days ahead of building permit or you know, site disturbance, but those plan sheets should include updates on if you feel it's appropriate, the recommendation would be to about the the concrete sidewalk, and I don't know if you still want to have a conversation about that, but the details for tree protection for those trees that will be protected, and then a detail on the flexi pave material. Also, there are issues related to crossing encasements because the water line sewer lines cross on the property without the adequate separation. So you have to do extra construction reinforcement basically for that.
And so a detail like that is the plan, the revised plan sheet. Okay.
And then also in the revised plan sheets, confirming the size of the water main that's going to connect out to North Street. That should be an eight inch line gate valves and a detail of the water service connections and also sewer ejector pump and pump size calculations. And then the other, and then you talked about certification by the arborist about those trees.
Tree protection.
Yes, protection prior to. And then the there still is. And this is mostly this is all Department of Public Works because it's the it has to do with the water line and water line connectivity. So the applicant really, no matter what, has to comply with the DPW design standards for that. But there's just a condition about that, that those final designs have to be reviewed and approved by DPW.
That needs to be a condition.
They have asked it to be.
Okay.
And I'm sure the language is it has to be reviewed and approved by the DPW prior to a shovel in the ground?
No, that's just overall, the design has to be approved. So.
So board, there was that question about the sidewalk and the two trees in the arbiter's property. Do we want to entertain the notion of just striping the street? And having that provide pedestrians safety? Do we want to ask the applicant to work hard with an arborist to figure out a way to install the concrete sidewalk? Without hopefully jeopardizing the trees?
I mean, the other thing you could think about is it is the standard is a five foot sidewalk. If you wanted to go to four, that still meets accessibility. And it's not, you know, an urban side. I mean, it is serving this neighborhood, so that could give more space. So instead of a five foot wide sidewalk, you could, you know, approve a narrower sidewalk in addition to the flexi pave.
But I think I think they should work with with the arborist. And, I mean, it doesn't make sense to to stop the project based. You know, I wanted, I my personal view is I would like to protect the the trees a little bit more.
Thank you, Nate.
You're distracting. But the striping, I think, should just be a back a backup and that they should try to try to do a you know, work with an arborist, you know, five being the goal for being okay and three being we can't do anything else. And I don't know how to make sure that that comes back to us so that we, and I guess that's just a that's up to Carolyn to work those things out.
Yeah. So if if I might to say that, I think, Sam, if the arborist works with the assesses the trees and comes out with a declaration that any work along those trees is going to be injurious to them, then we come back to the striping idea?
Yeah, that would that would be my, that'd be mine.
And there's also this alternative material.
Yeah, I think in addition to that, no matter what.
Just those options before.
Right.
When just, yeah, I mean, I think your point, it's pretty compelling that we want to encourage sidewalk.
So is it, so let me just make sure I understand. So you're saying five feet, four feet or?
I'm okay with four feet. That gives the roots a little bit more, not may not be enough, but it gives it a little bit more, and it certainly meets ADA requirements.
And then they could come back, not as a full amendment, but come back to the board with an alternative if the arborist determines that even that would have an impact, no matter whether you do air spading or what have you. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
More to that.
I mean, my personal view is I I think this is actually a great infill project. And, you know, just basic calc calculations are that there's you're going to increase the city taxes by about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's a teacher plus. We're talking about laying off teachers in our in our city. And that's, you know, the there's trade offs with everything. And the idea that somehow these these trees are worth that does not make sense to me.
Anyone else? You know, and I I guess I would also add that this we are not impacting the wetlands. We still have to go through the cons comm committee and they will kind of put their expertise, see how those are safeguarded. There's still a majority of the the area is still preserved for wetland absorption, for tree canopy. And it will add a component of housing in an area that is close to downtown. And it's not the only part of town where this is being experienced. We've been through this in the other side of Ward three up in Bay State. We're seeing it in Florence. We live in a desirable town. People want housing. I don't think we want to limit that. So there's my soapbox.
Rick. Rich.
Because I'm I'm so unfamiliar with the ordinance and working on it, but I'm not there yet. It's going to take a while. There was a comment, oh, well, you opened the the meeting on this topic by explaining that we are considering both the site plan and and what are the comments you're saying, you know, that you could deny is that whether the consideration, what are the basis for that?
Yeah, so.
Point me to the is there a list of like?
Yes, so in the yes, so the links that were provided, so site plan is generally considered more of a technical permit, and you can turn down a site plan if the applicant is not meeting the technical standards. So water and sewer connectivity, street connection sidewalks, whatever that may be, maybe the access is not appropriate. It's going to create an issue for the network. Special permit is discretionary, more discretionary in that if you feel that it's not in the interest of the city, it doesn't meet the city plans, that you have the discretion to turn it down. It's not, it's a little bit less on technical details than not meeting those six criteria in the special permit section. However, there are certain special permits identified in the zoning ordinance that have very specific criteria. It's not just how is more units than seven. And then there are some special permits that don't have any particular criteria. And so there's really much more heavily heavy weight on is this use appropriate in this location? And so, yes, under, you know, you're evaluating whether more than seven, more than six units in the urban residential B district is appropriate, because that's the trigger. Building more than six units in the urban residential B district automatically requires a special permit because city council decided that that would at least be a threshold. But during that process, the city council worked on very specific criteria. Well, what would be appropriate to grant a special permit? And so that's why you have A through E or F now of the special permit criteria specifically about more than seven units. So you know, the units percentage have to be either affordable, dedicated, affordable housing or less than twelve hundred square feet. The all the units have to be sort of treated equally. There has to be this parklet space, and it's based on per square foot. The design criteria for the units, how they're oriented to the street, the fact that you have sidewalk connectivity and all that stuff. Those are very specific, and what I did say was cookbook criteria, because the whole point was to say, okay, the city understands and knows and needs housing. How do we want that housing to look? How do we want it to function? Let's write it down so everyone knows, the public knows, the developers know. And so that there is a path forward and people can understand that it's not just an arbitrary special permit. On this day, the planning board felt like they wanted to approve it. On this other day, they decided not to. So that's what that specificity is about. Yes, it's still discretionary, but these are the components that you consider in determining that discretionary permit. That's, yes, that's in the urban residential B table. And so at the top of the code, there's an attachment for the U R B table. And I can read those. Yeah, so it's attachment seven, I believe. Let me just double check. Sorry.
Yeah, it's the, if you have. Yeah.
I'm just wanted.
So at the very top of the zoning code, there's all the PDF files and you want to look at U R B, which is sorry, here.
And you can't, it's not easy to search or anything.
So
Carolyn does with the agenda, Rich, if you have that available, she makes hot links to specific parts, and you can click right on that to go to the site plan criteria or to the special.
So the special permit list is at the very bottom of that PDF file. So it's A through F. So A is about buildings and parking and sort of talking about the orientation of the buildings and parking as it relates to the street. This is a unique project or property because it has a private little strip that is a private road. And talks about the streets and road roadway. So it's all about design and making sure that these new projects that are fitting into areas in neighborhoods that didn't previously have homes fit into that context. And then the park space we talked about is about environment and energy. So hers ratings, these are a little bit outdated now that are stretch often energy stretch code has advanced well beyond twenty thirteen when we adopted this. And the size and access and affordability criteria, so eleven percent of the units have to be either affordable or units twenty five percent of twelve hundred square feet or smaller. And then internet internet access and connectivity, and those things relate to, you know, want not wanting to, if you have affordable units or smaller units that you don't want folks to be treated differently just because they're an affordable unit or a smaller unit.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn. Other questions, other comments? Okay. Might be time to make a motion. Think we've been through everything. I think we've heard a lot of good comments from the the audience, both here and on Zoom. Yeah, I think the applicant has heard them all too. Appreciate their willingness to meet with their neighbors and work through things.
Okay, I have it up here. So I will make a motion to approve the site plan and special permit by sovereign builders for development of twelve units on a parcel eight view Ave. Map ID twenty five C dash twelve seventeen. Permit LU twenty four eleven with the conditions that we have listed and discussed, both from you and from Carolyn.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Melissa, second. Okay, motion's been made by Melissa, seconded by Sam Taylor. Any discussion? Um, I'll just say that I, I, we can sometimes separate out the site plan and the special permit for different votes, but I think in this time we're just collapsing them both into the same, into the same motion. All right. So here, no discussing, all those in favor of the motion? Okay. Um, unanimous. Thank you, everyone for coming.
Thank you. Oops.
We give you six more months. I needed twelve months, but. A little break.
Yes, please.
Uh, the planning board will adjourn for, uh, five to 10 minutes. And then we'll come back for our second public hearing.
Thanks for your patience. We're coming.
That was crazy.
Hey, just so you know, we're not cutting down any trees.
We're just paving everything.
Stop it. Stop it. Oh my good lord.
Are you building a concrete house?
Yeah.
You read the article in the New Yorker?
Oh boy.
My goodness.
Oh, it's in the, one of the most. Have you read this?
Oh, you are?
It's a, this.
So how many acres is this whole thing that you guys just talked about tonight? Five?
Five acres, but. Top of the architecture and historic present and it's, it's. Yeah.
Oh, we should go similar to like off of, um, Florence Road. They have that little community.
On Burt's Pit.
It's. No, I mean, it's going to be like individual houses.
Yeah.
Like a.
Off of, off of Florence Road, they have, uh, some, it's like a little community where they have.
That's been in there for years.
Yeah, it's been there forever. All the backyards and that.
No, this is, this. Yeah, it's just like small, small individual.
Everybody wants the tiny house.
That's like the last five years or so. There's a newer one on Burt's Pit.
Emerson, uh, by past Emerson, right? On the right, they just threw in a bunch of little houses.
A section of the bike.
Those are habitat houses.
Oh, yes.
We, we built it.
Everybody wants those tiny houses. Lots clean.
How many, did you say they want to build in there? That's it? Oh.
Wait, okay, they're gone.
I mean. There's two hundred up there.
I thought they were putting in like, you know, like huge condo structures, like, cause we came in.
A little beloved little wooded area.
Yeah, but it, I mean, I get both sides. I learned a lot about trees and such. And I'm thinking, just give the man forty grand for his two trees in the front yard. Just saying.
Yeah, it's literally my backyard.
How much would it cost? I mean, that, it's already been done, but they said, well, have the city buy it. I mean, where, where does the, you obviously get grants and people donate money.
Yeah, I have no idea. I mean, you probably look online at how much he purchased the whole property for, um, and I'm sure he's put in.
Oh yeah, engineering and all that.
Cause they're, they're pretty far along in the process, so.
So how long has that, this whole thing been going on for this?
I mean, this is the second planning meeting, um, but I don't, I think he bought it last year and he's been working on it. So, but he's been, you know, he has to go through the conservation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Process has been seamless.
The people that were here, sitting here today know where you live. You need to get a cop escort or something. You want to get a room at the hotel tonight?
But you excused yourself from the meeting. I mean.
Yeah, no, I think like, I mean, I wrote a letter. I'm not, I'm not against it. I'm not thrilled to have instruction in my back.
I like whoever, I couldn't see the other lady sitting right where she's, huh?
Miss White? Miss White?
Oh yeah. Where she said, if you want to get involved, you gotta get into the process.
You know, where people, that's exactly what I was saying.
You all right, Nate? You good? Did you back up out there?
Yeah, I think I'm good. Yeah.
Oh goodness.
I, I should, I mean, he didn't want it to escalate this, but he was drunk.
Well, just one person or? Oh, okay.
I thought it was a whole.
He was stuck here in the hill. Somebody's trying to help him out, but that actually made him more angry.
See him, he was in the hole.
Pulled out, he pulled out.
Oh, that's terrible.
And he was very drunk and then he said like, you know, don't call the police. I'm gonna punch you. And then so I'm like, okay, just leave them.
Sorry, my neighbor David was sitting on a piney, worked for the sheriff's office. And I was like, I think he's gone. I didn't know if he did, but.
There was a guy named AJ. I, you know, I've seen him somewhere. He was helping.
Wow.
He was helping. He said that's why you didn't know where that.
I know. It's like, I have a cartoon brain, so it doesn't hate much. Where do you go around here to get that plastered?
That's early.
I thought, did you say my name? Or I thought you said my name.
Said, are you okay, Nate? On your way out or something?
Oh, 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 oh.
Sure you were good when you came back in.
So you're Tim, right? I'm Tim, yeah. Yeah, I remember meaning that. Yeah. Yeah, you, you have a, you have a styled hair today. I, I do. When, when you came to pick up the yellow sign, I think your hair wasn't like, um. I was out of control until, until she cut it. I was.
Seriously, it was bad. I'm not a hairdresser. I went to law school. This is.
Well, it looks great. No, it looks great.
Very calm.
You should see it on a windy day.
Here's the docks.
We had some, my girls, my, my, uh, my daughter had some friends at the house and I, I came in all, my hair was, this was before it was cut. I went upstairs and took a shower, came back downstairs, was combed. She goes, I thought you were a different person.
Oh dear.
So, yeah, it's, uh, sometimes these things take a long time. So you're delayed, right? You, what, what are your schedule for? Seven forty. It just. What time do you guys close out tonight? Nine? I, I.
Like five minutes.
Goes on the ten sometimes. Wow. So she, she doesn't, you know, Carolyn doesn't try to schedule like too many hours. Well, sometimes when you got too many.
Yeah, then you're here forever.
There is a, that's sort of a state deadline. You know, you got sixty-five days. Yeah.
Gotcha.
You know, sometimes applicant asks for extensions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi.
I'm Tim Scrocky. Nice to meet you. This is my wife.
Nice to meet you, Carolyn.
And this is Agniri, owner of the property.
Oh, okay.
Part owner.
So if you want to go ahead and load up while we're.
I, I didn't bring anything to load up.
Okay.
So.
He's still very, you know, yeah.
I'm assuming everybody's got the paperwork that we gave you.
So if anybody's still left in Zoom world, I can probably go onto the.
Sorry about that. I'm not a computer person.
Um, that's fine. There probably won't be anybody. I don't really see any of your neighbors here.
It's the guy that was drunk and fell over by the window.
He was really not happy with his new house. He wants to live in it is the problem. Far out, but. I know, right? Yeah, there's not really a bike trail.
I never know.
Stan left feeling.
We'll have a, for this side of that. Yeah, sure.
It's just giving away what you're doing. I mean, they already said, I forgot everything. So I feel like this is. Thanks.
Alrighty, everyone. Good evening again. We're reopening our planning board meeting of July twenty-fifth. Just to note that one planning board member had to leave. And we've been joined by another plan, planning board meeting, Stacy, who had recused herself during the last hearing. So we're back at a, a full quorum of five members. Um, so at this point, I would like to, um, open a meeting plan for seven forty PM for a site plan review to build a detached. Nope. Yep. To me, to. This is true at, at fifty-seven Woodland Drive, a detached pool house by Accent Building and Remodeling.
Correct.
Map ID forty-two, one, five, seven, permit LU dash twenty-four, dash twenty-one. And this is a site plan review only. Um, and it needs a, a vote of four or seven members to approve it. And the applicable code is, uh, one fifty dash eleven point six, our site plan criteria. So is there a presentation?
I can start. Please do. Okay. So I'm, I'm Tim Scrocky. I own Accent Building and Remodeling. Uh, this is my wife and this is April Agniri. She's, her and her husband own the property at fifty-seven Woodland. And, uh, we're proposing to build a pool house. They already have a beautiful in-ground pool, uh, on their property already. But they would, uh, like to be able to have this pool house to be able to entertain with their children. They, her husband's a cook and a chef, so they want to be able to have a kitchen in there. Uh, so we're proposing to do a, a kitchen or whatever the, the plan is there. There will be a bathroom, uh, on the, on the property, uh, or at the pool house. Uh, everything will be connected to, uh, the sewer to, to the house. The water's coming from the house. Um, there's a gas, uh, propane tank, right? In the, in the yard. So there'll be, cooking will be done by, uh, propane. Uh, there will not be any water runoff to, uh, the properties on the side. There's, there's multiple feet from where the pool house is being proposed to the next, uh, property owner. Uh, there will definitely be no water runoff down to the road because it's, it's uphill. And wherever the water's going to go, it will basically never ever reach the road. Uh, so there won't be any soil in, into the road down at Woodland Drive, except for, you know, whatever equipment might be there. But we'll make sure everything's cleaned up that way. But there was, just based on the, the previous thing that we just listened to, there's no trees going to be cut down on the property. The, uh, Carolyn emailed me the other day about trees and I said, no, there's no trees. There'll be some trimming. There's some scrub trees that just grown up against the property line like that, that will be trimmed. But we're, we're not planning on cutting any of the existing trees that are there. There's, there's plenty of room for the property. And I think somebody was there from the planning board was yesterday, right? Couple of days ago. I'm not sure which, which member was there. Uh, the homeowner saw somebody walking around the property, was wondering who it was, and they said it was from the planning board. So.
I introduced myself to your husband.
Okay, okay. So. So. So hopefully you were able to, hopefully you were able to see where basically the pool house is going to go. You know, next, next to, uh, the existing pool and this and that. I, I don't, I don't know if you have anything to say, April, or, or if you have any questions for us or.
I mean, I don't have anything really to say unless you have questions for me about it.
So may come up. Is there any, I, you know, the only drawing that I found that was helpful was a site plan of the locus, and even that wasn't really helpful. Is there, all the, there were just. It wasn't much. There's only hand drawn.
Right.
It's, we.
For plan, right?
I saw the floor plan, yeah, but not the site plans.
Oh, your site plan.
Yeah.
Um, we, we were, sorry. We, we asked if we had to have it, uh, done by a surveyor or we could just hand draw it. And we got an email back saying, no, you can just hand draw it in. So we went back in there, my son and I, we went back in there and took all the measurements from the survey property line, you know, with a hundred and fifty foot tape measure. And that's probably the one that you had.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And then just to clarify, this is not, so it's coming, it's being permitted as a second unit because kitchen and bathing facilities automatically are a trigger for a unit. So that's, even though this is a pool house, because it has those components, um, it had to come in as a detached, um, a, um, second unit.
But because of that, is it put to any further like consideration of an ABU branch or like that?
No, so they could, they could have people stay there if they want. Yeah.
Yet another unit at the same.
But that would be, I mean, oh, a third unit. No, they couldn't have a third unit. This stands for the second unit. Right.
I'm just curious, is there an issue with the gas moratorium or not? Because it's already.
I think it's propane.
Oh.
It's, yeah, there's a, there's a.
It's like, please, like, I don't think so. Yeah. Thank you.
So we don't have an issue with propane for a new, new structure as opposed to electric?
Um, I'm sorry. Yes, that's a good question.
City is trying to move towards all new structures having not fossil fuels at all, but, uh, electrical, even though we know that the electrical system is.
So I didn't, yeah, I didn't think about, because it's not heated, right? It's a seasonal space.
It's seasonal.
That's why I didn't pick it up, but, um, um, right. So what you could say is for, um, heating, um, if there is a heating unit installed, it has to be all electric.
Okay, but the chef can have a gas grill.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, not gas propane.
Yeah, it would be like a, like a grill, right?
Yeah, like in.
Have like a stove or like an oven.
At this time, but, you know, part of our concern is down the road 10 or 15 years from now, the next homeowner comes in and they may do any number of things.
Sheriff.
Unit then.
Yeah. So you could just note that as a condition that if any, um, you know, to make it a fully, you know, or season use with heating, it needs to be electric.
Um, like a mini split or something.
Right.
Yep.
Where the location of the, the, we'll call it the, the second structure is, there's a, a big drop off.
Yep.
Right down there. Um, and I'm not sure, I, I, again, I couldn't tell how close the footprint was to that drop off and what you were doing about then. I don't know how far your property goes in terms of that drop off, but if it'll shedding water into any neighbor's yard or.
The majority of the property that we own is to the right of the house where the pool house is. So it goes almost halfway to sixty-six.
Okay.
Into the woods. That's like really the only woods we own.
Okay.
So what was your name? Oh, yeah. So if you, if you look at what we drew right here, the closest boundary was forty-two feet away. Right there. And then the, the back of the pool house to the property line was a hundred and twenty-seven feet away.
Okay, yeah, I'm more concerned about the, the, how you're going to deal with the water setting off the roof and making sure that it wasn't going to cause any issues because of the drop off there.
Yeah, I think, to me, when I looked at the site last year and stuff, it looks like somebody just, whoever cleared the lot, they kind of maybe took dirt out of there and then they just threw some excess debris from like trees and you can correct me.
There were actually car parts, like whole cars there when we moved in.
Whatever. So, I mean, the pool, the back, the back of the pool house does go up to there. It's not in that area.
Yeah.
Um.
Good.
But if water ran off, I'm trying to think the way the roof goes, if water ran off of it, it would, one side would basically go into that little bit of a ditch or gully. The rest of it would head towards Woodland. The road, the main road, but it would never, never, ever reach the road, the water runoff.
Um, and you're familiar with our new lighting ordinances? You might want to look at them and you and the electrician.
Okay.
Okay. Um, pretty specific about what you can do with outdoor lighting, even though you're in a quiet neighborhood. You're not commercial, it's still.
Exterior or interior?
More exterior.
Okay.
You know, lighting of the pool or, um, barbecue parties, things of that nature.
Yep.
Want to be careful.
I think my. I think my electrician just had proposed a couple small floodlights on the front of that facing the pool.
Which faces our house.
Which faces their house, but nothing, nothing in the back, except for we wanted to put a, an outdoor shower in, and I talked to the building department uh, about that. It just needs a roof structure over it so that water can't just, it has to be tied into the sewer. And it has to have a, a roof over it based on the city ordinance uh, for outdoor showers. And they said that was fine as long as there was a roof over it. Um, and the outdoor showers not really to take shower showers is if you wanted to come out of the pool or something, you wanted to just, you know, rinse off and stuff like that.
But still, any.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
I don't know. I was, I was an electrician and I didn't keep up with all the new codes, so I hopefully yours is more of a quality thing. So.
Um, I'm sure my electrician, he works in Northampton a lot for construct and different guys like that. I'm sure he knows what the situation is with that.
It's in the uh, what, what we call the water said protection district.
Why?
Water supply, which, and I'm not, I meant to look at those um, kind of criteria again. The biggest one I remember is about the use of pesticides on the lawn and fertilizers, things like that. Is there anything else we need to be aware of?
Not relative to this structure. It's, it, um, there, there would be a concern if there was, um, you know, a drain in a garage that was not, you know, just sort of disappearing or storage of um, large amounts of fertilizer or chemicals or gas and oil.
Yeah. So pool chemicals, things like that, but there's a limit, I think, of residential chemicals.
And the pool is already there, so, yeah.
Where was it?
Water supply district, uh. I think probably in the application.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I just didn't want to know where to look.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, other questions from the board?
I move opposed public comment.
Well, I don't think we opened it.
Oh, you're right. Sorry. I just assumed they didn't have anything. Sorry, sorry.
Is there anyone here in council chambers who would like to speak? In favor or opposed to this application? All right, hearing none. Is there anyone in our Zoom audience who would like to comment on this application?
See any.
Don't see any. Okay.
I now move that we close public comment.
Okay. Moved by Jana White, seconded by Melissa. Um, any discussion? We're, we're good with our questions to the applicants and.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all those in favor of closing a public comment? Unanimous? Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I think we have a condition to waive traffic mitigation.
Yep.
It's pretty straightforward to me.
And then electric, electric for any heat that's.
Any, any heat, any heat will be all electric and you have to conform to our new electrical codes, our new outdoor lighting codes.
And that would just be approved by the electrical inspector?
At the building department.
At the, yeah, yeah.
And when he comes by to do the final inspection, he'll check the fixtures and hear that they're appropriate.
Do we ask that as a condition or is that?
No, it's not really standard because it's.
Good. Good. Okay, the motion's been made. No, it hasn't. Has the motion been made?
No.
Again, it's earlier.
Yeah. Any other discussing, any questions? Any comments? Okay, thanks for reprimanding those two conditions.
All right, I'll do it. Uh, I move to approve the um, let's make sure we got another one right behind it. So uh, to uh, approve the site plan review to be, build a detached pool house by accent building and remodeling at fifty seven Woodland Drive, Florence map ID forty two, one, fifty seven with the two conditions discussed, um, waiving the traffic mitigation and um, if there's any heating at any time, it has to be electric.
I second.
Great. Motion's been made by Melissa, seconded by Jana. Any question, any discussing? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For your project.
So am I good to go to the building department and, and do a permit or how does this?
There's an appeal period. So as soon as we get the decision to the clerk, it might, it's going to take a couple of days.
That's fine.
Then um, you'll get notified and then that starts the twenty day appeal period.
Okay.
And so you can pull a permit after that. Um, um, at that point, you pick up the decision and then you can go to the building department.
That's fine. And then how long do we leave the sign up?
Oh, can you bring the sign back?
Yeah, yeah.
We're running low.
Are you?
Yes. Um.
Can we bring it back like Monday or something or?
Absolutely. That would be great.
I just.
That's hilarious. What time do you open tomorrow?
Um, eight thirty.
Okay.
But otherwise Monday for sure.
Okay. Thank you all for your help. Thank you. Have a good night.
You're up next.
We're like, we have one left. We have one left.
Thank you for your help. Thank you. We'll bring the sign back to you.
Yeah, and um, View Avenue, oh, we, we got to get that one back too. We find this lot?
I just, and it's a janky, like, oops, uh, USB drive here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who's left here? See John Handstall? Sam Wiley? Who's read AI meeting?
Zoom.
The Zoom, another Zoom control? So, ready?
Yes, let's do it.
Okay, so at this point, we'd like to open up a, a site plan review advertised for seven fifty five P M. To build a second detached dwelling by backyard AD use at thirty five Bliss Street, Florence map ID twenty two D dash oh, eight, three. And this site plan review needs a simple majority vote of four of our seven members. Um, and we have a presentation.
Absolutely. Yeah. Do you want me to share my screen?
Yes.
Yes. You guys have those materials and I'll be, I'll share my screen. And if you have any questions, we, we can go.
And if you help us by identifying yourself.
Yes, my name is Tim Riley. Um, I work for backyard AD use. I am also a Northampton resident. Um, we have another project here. We've done several leases in town. Um, homeowner has figured out an option for her aging mother. Um, we're going to zone or permit this under the, you know, two single family homes by right. Allowing mom to live um, in her daughter's backyard and be close to her grandchildren. So that's the, the intent here. Um, laid out in front of you is that, you know, all our zoning compliance for three fifty six dash six, eleven. Um, I won't bore you guys with that. It's fairly straightforward. We are in the W S P district, the same as the previous one here. Um, we're meeting all applicable setbacks um, and standards. All new construction, electric, mini splits, um, meeting all the requirements for, for the city. Um, couple of unique things on this. Um, we are building an integrated um, garage here. So um, and complying with the W S P standards, we are setback from the road, um, broken up the facade there as well. Um, and then the interesting thing about this property in the W S P here on Bliss Street, um, the only section of sidewalk on Bliss Street uh, is in front of their house.
Right.
Um, it's a bizarre, I, I don't know how many of you were there, pulled it up on Google Street View. So there's a sidewalk basically from their driveway that goes not even all the way down their property. Um, and their driveway is off of that, and then they do have a second curb cut there. Can go share my screen here. Let's go over to that one. Oops. Okay. Let's get this out of the way. So as part of our application here, um, you know, designing for aging employees for the elderly mother, mother, a garage was important. Especially for our winter months here. So what we are proposing here, um, we know that per, per the ordinance in town. Quote it for you to sound smart. Uh, you know, eight dot eight parking load, load space standards. Um, we have two existing curb cuts. So one is pre-existing non-conforming. What we are proposing as part of this project is not to increase beyond the two that are existing, but to abandon the one that is sort of in the middle of the property. Um, return that to pervious lawn area, meet all the D P W standards, um, and move that approximately um, forty feet, fifty feet, um, a little bit down Bliss Street, and that will serve as the access for the elderly homeowner um, into her, her house and her garage. So.
All right. So you are proposing to still have two curb cuts, but you're moving one of them?
Correct. Yep. So, so two exist. One is pre-existing non-conforming. We are not going above two. Um, we are proposing just to move that second curb. That is everything. Yeah. If you guys have any questions, I, I mean, I'd be happy to go over all of the details here. Um.
So yeah, just, just for the board's sake, even though it's um, I mean, in terms of the two driveways, it, it, is this a, is this a waiver that we're allowing? Because even though there was one grandfather, then that's disappearing. So we're actually.
Well, they're essentially moving it, so you could approve it as part of this site plan. It needs a permit, even if it were never there, it would need a permit from the planning board. So um, eh, eh, so I think um, you know, internally, we looked at this pretty, um, tried to figure out if there's a way to consolidate it, but given the layout of the property, there wasn't a way to sort of fork off, you know, access into that garage. Um, also a long, it's a long, um, longer lot.
Right.
So effectively it presents as sort of a rhythm along the street with a house driveway, house driveway. Um, but yes, I mean, that's part of the review, the plan.
And I think we're going to see more and more of this as we permit second units on lots, people asking to have a driveway, another driveway added, and we've done that a couple of times. So it is going to get a little creative for us. Um, you're right, but in this situation, they couldn't share that driveway. They couldn't wind it up. Okay, um.
Yeah, logistically, um, there is enough parking on site with the existing driveway and garage to meet the requirements. It's sort of that logistics piece of how, how do we actually, actually serve the unit.
Yeah. And, and there's, there's parking on Bliss Street, uh, at least on one side. I didn't notice any, no parking signs. Um, it's, it's not a crazy busy street, but it is kind of a cut through for folks.
Thoroughfare, absolutely.
Yeah.
Get, get to that part of Florence.
Um, so, but given the uh, the amount of traffic out of this small unit, um, uh, it, it shouldn't be an issue having that second curb cut to, to this guy's eyes. Um, you're not removing any trees. There was a big tree removed in the corner, but that was probably a couple of years ago before they decided about this project.
That was not part of our scope. So they hired an arborist and did, this was like a, it was a white pine.
Yeah.
So they had the whole crane thing, but that wasn't part of our scope.
Okay. Because sometimes we look at that also, somebody does, that goes and then removes trees that might, might have been part of a project, and especially if it's a major tree like that, we would want it to be replaced, but.
Within twelve months, you have.
Twelve.
Yeah.
So we don't.
Do you know when that?
I don't. I don't. I could talk to our client.
That didn't come up at all. So you knew that? You just happened to know that?
That's what these site visits are all about. There's a.
Oh, you saw a stump?
A huge stump there right in the corner that if I wanted to build a house in that lot, I probably wouldn't want that white pine dang. But it looked like it was done much, more than a year ago. That's my assumption, but I just wanted to make sure that people, we, we run into that before where somebody clear cuts a lot of land and then they come in and say, oh, I'm going to build here. And so, um, see, it's actually still noted here on the plan. Right at that corner lot line, that's the white pine. That is now a stump.
Even though it's not today.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. So, um.
And at the front?
At the front, right, right? Just
Yeah.
South of the curb cut, the new curb cut. Yeah. Um. Okie dokie. Uh, I, 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 I. Are they suggesting any tree plantings along the street, Bliss Street? We're not asking for a sidewalk because that is a real anomaly there, but.
Yeah. Um, they have some existing plantings there. It will be impacted by construction. Uh, we're always keeping that in mind of, hey, where can we move things? We have some hydrangeas and other things.
Um, yeah, okay. I, I guess I would just like to check in with the homeowner to see when that tree was cut down and if, because it's shown here on the plan, I don't know when these plans were drawn up and and, and it probably was, if anything, perhaps ignorant of our.
Um, so what you could do, you could say that um, tree replacement is required for that pine tree. Um, and prior to, prior to construction, the applicant has to submit um, information about when the tree was cut and the size of the tree. And tree replacement will be required if it was cut, you know, within twelve months. Yeah.
And, and very possibly they didn't do it in any malicious kind of hidden way. It was just a, a mistake on their part, but we want to be clear that this is not kosher.
Correct. Yeah. And that, that was out of our scope.
Yeah, sure.
Before we engaged and.
Yep.
Swak. Yep.
Is that okay with the board?
Yep.
When does that twelve month, when does that start and?
Well, so if you cut the tree on January one, um, if you take out a permit in October, you're still within that twelve months. If you take a permit out on January second of the following year, yeah. No, the day you cut the tree, twelve months.
But then, yeah.
Yeah.
Based on when you take the permit out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When you start, when you apply, right?
Yeah, so not twelve months ago from tonight, twelve months ago from when the permits pulled.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they could save perhaps a couple of thousand dollars if they do all. Okay, but I'm sure you'll have that conversation with them.
And that's, that's.
Appreciate it. Yeah. Okay. Good.
Trees are important. Yeah, I, I was going to get up and say something earlier. I was like.
Oh, good.
Uh, lots of different angles.
And you're familiar with our lighting ordinances? I, I apologize. I don't know if a lighting plan was submitted with this. Um.
We have exterior lights. They're always the dark sky compliant downcast. Um, I'll make sure we're refreshed on if there have been any changes since last read that.
Yeah. So Google Earth is just from September twenty two, so.
And you can see that big tree. Yeah. Alrighty, um. Any other questions? Uh, let's open it up to the public comment. Is there anyone here in city council chambers who would like to speak in favor or opposed to the application? Hearing none. We'll turn to the Zoom room. Couple of, a couple of people there. No, nobody has raised their hand. Is there a motion to close the public? Well, if we've closed the public comment, remember we can't ask the applicant any questions. Everybody, anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I just have a comment from D P W. These are all technical details and I can email them to you, but they just had a um, comments about the um, where the water service needs to um, connect from and T and all that.
He, he had Larry out on site. Um, he inspected the basement and told us exactly how he wants to see it. Uh, we had that sewer line scope as well to know.
Okay.
Location and depth for tying.
So all the utilities are coming from the host house?
We're following all the building department requirements. Um, sometimes uh, in this detached example, um, what we're typically seeing, and I don't want to speak for them. Uh, what we're typically seeing is they want to see a separate water meter tied off or grab, not a separate curb cut for the water.
Yep.
They want us to grab before the existing meter and run a second meter. Um, and then we're often, you know, so again, no second curb cut for the sewer, but we can go grab it in the yard or in the basement of the existing dwelling, depending on what we're expecting.
And it would be an all-electric.
Correct. All-electric.
And, and electric is from the house also. And, and electric is from the house also.
Um, in this case, there's overhead service wires right along Bliss Street there. Um, so if we are attached to the main house, um, it's that ordinance of one overhead service. In this case, we are detached, so we'll go grab a new two hundred amp service from the street.
Street.
From the overhead wires that are there. Yep.
If the applicant has the resources, underground service to the um, to the panel would be great, but I know that that's a cost factor.
Yeah, um, it, it's a cost factor. Um, you know, in our ever changing world, we, we do a lot of work across the state. Um, so we are doing a lot of undergrounds, but in this case, those overhead wires are literally right there.
Okay.
Um, and I can't speak to, in, in the top of my head, where the nearest pole is in terms of, cause if we're going underground, we'd come down.
Sure.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Um. Any other questions for the applicant? Is there motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Janet White. Second, if I've listened to close the public hearing, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Okay. Um, so we heard a condition about um, the uh, accepting the second driveway?
Well, that wouldn't be a condition you're except, you're approving the plan as is, and then conditions would be prior to issuance, the building permit, the applicant has to submit a documentation about when the tree was removed and provide tree replacement post-construction if it was within the last twelve months.
And, and their, and the next set of plans, any to address any of the recommendations from the DPW?
Yeah, they don't, they won't need, I don't think they need new plans. It's just part of when they file the building permit, they have to do it the way DPW and plumbing inspector requires with the Ts and all of that.
And I think we also have a waiver for the traffic mitigation on this one as well.
So there are two, it's, so it's not, that's not a condition, that's kind of a waiver. Okay. Everybody's comfortable with the second driveway in this situation? It's going to be case by case. Okay. All right.
I move to approve the uh, site plan at thirty-five Bliss Street, map ID twenty-two D dash zero eight three with the conditions, with the waiver for the traffic mitigation and the condition related to uh, possible tree replacement.
Great. And motions been made by Janet White, seconded by Rich. Um. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very much. Good luck. Keep building those little homes.
We'll see you next month.
Okay.
Not lying.
All right, um, we just have some minutes to approve, I think.
Yes. Uh, all of May and all of June.
All caught up, huh? That's great. Minutes we uh, minutes of May ninth, May twenty-third, June thirteenth and June twenty-seven. All right. Their motion?
Wait a quarter.
Please.
I need to abstain from three of those because I wasn't a member of the board for three of those. If I abstain, can we still? Prove them?
So first you only need four, but well, first, first, you're accepting the minutes as part of the record of the board. So it doesn't matter that you weren't at the meeting.
Oh.
Um, and then second, you only need four.
It's nice to have someone look at the minutes and review it. Carolyn always likes a little editor, a little wordsmith there to catch her.
Do.
Type lows, you know?
Sure.
She doesn't want it to become public record, but. So motion's been made. Uh, we need a second, I think.
Second.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the minutes from those four meetings. Any discussing? Thank you very much for bringing that up. Um, all those in favor? Unanimous. No A and Rs? Okay.
Not the last time I checked. I hope there aren't.
Motion to adjourn at nine twenty-seven? It's the move? All right. Motion's been made. All those in favor? Thank you.